Good evening, the regular meeting of the Independent School District 279 School Board is called to order at 6:00 PM on August 29th, 2023. This regular business meeting of the Osseo School Board is being conducted in the boardroom at the Educational Service Center in Maple Grove. The meeting can be monitored electronically by streaming online from the district website. An archived recording of tonight's meeting will also be available on the district website. Seated in front of you this evening, from my left to your right is Director Thomas Brooks, Director Tanya Simons, myself, Jackie Moscata Jones, Director Sarah Mitchell, and Director Tammer Grady. Director Heather Douglas is unable to make it to the meeting tonight. Also present in the boardroom is Superintendent Dr. Kim Heil and members of the superintendent's cabinet. Those of you who can, please stand and join me with for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Board members, are there any additions to the agenda? All right, hearing none, is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Tanya Simons, second by Sarah Mitchell. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion passes five to zero. The next standing agenda item is recognitions, and we have no recognitions this evening. I hope to get more of those as the athletic season pumps up. The next agenda item is the audience opportunity to address the school board. I'm going to review a few of the guidelines for those that will speak to the board tonight. I would like to remind all that everyone here this evening, regardless of their point of view on matters before the board, have the best interests of our scholars in mind. We want our children to care about each other even when there is disagreement. We strive to be one community, and in doing so, decorum matters in this public space as we share perspectives. Speakers will be called to the podium in this order, first students, then parents, then staff, and community members and others. When I call your name, please come to the microphone and state your name, the topic, and whether you are a district resident. Please keep your comments to three minutes. Tonight we have nine cards, I believe, so not as long as other ones, but I appreciate keeping to three minutes. Address the entire board, that means we are not addressing an individual board member or the audience either verbally or with posters and/or literature. Handouts for board members are to be placed on the information table or given to the Board Secretary Sherry. The Board Secretary will provide copies to the board members. The board and audience will listen and not respond back at this time. If you would like someone to follow up with you on your questions and comments, please let the Board Secretary know. Concerns about a particular book can be brought to the review committee after addressing it with the teacher and administration, and the full policy procedure can be found on the school board page under Policy and Procedure 652. Comments and interactions between board members and the public are expected to be respectful, courteous, professional, professional and civil. For the good of our community, personnel concerns should be directed to the individuals in the following order: Building Principal, Executive Director for Human Resources, Assistant Superintendent, Superintendent, and finally in writing to the school board. Thank you for listening to that whole thing, I appreciate it. All right, our first speaker is a student, Adriana Dodge.
Good evening, School Board. I was here a few weeks ago for the work session, and I just kind of had some things I wanted to say. First thing is that I was very surprised by the fact that over the entire work session, I was asked zero questions from the board. I sacrificed my time to come here and answer any questions for the board, so to hear only questions about parents and how they feel about the LGBTQ plus resolution was frankly kind of insulting. Like, I am here to answer questions and I'm not having any questions directed towards me that definitely should have been directed towards me. And to kind of go over some of the questions, one of them was along the lines of like, what should are kids forced to like give their pronouns in class? Because some of them are uncomfortable giving their pronouns in class. And I am almost certain that that comment wasn't talking about LGBTQ plus students worried about outing themselves in front of the class, but instead cisgender students that are worried about giving their pronouns in class, which was a very confusing question to me. And to answer it, no, no one is forced to give their pronouns. It's just like, I've actually never been asked in a class whether or not, what my pronouns are. So that's never happened before, but in outside activities, yes, but it's never something anyone's been forced to do. So to kind of bring that up as an issue when it doesn't exist was different. Another thing that I found really interesting is how all the questions, except for I believe two of them, were about parents. There seems to be a major lack of care about students and how this policy impacts students, only about the parents, how this impacts the parents, what the parents think about this, and that is shown in these school board meetings. The past two, I think, have had zero students come to speak. So it's only been parents and community members, and I'm not saying that parents shouldn't have their voices heard. I'm just saying we need to take into consideration students' opinions and they need to be heard. So my recommendation is that you guys maybe put together a group of students from school, especially now that school is starting up, to get their opinions on it, queer students and non-queer students, because all their opinions matter, to get actual, real, like, experience, student experience, because you're hearing it from parents. They don't bring their kids to speak, like, it's coming from the parents, so we don't know how much of it is student experience. So I would just like you guys to take note of the fact that none of these parents have brought their kids, because their kids frankly don't care. Their kids don't care about what's happening, they haven't been affected by it, and you could tell that by when I was speaking last time, I brought up the second ed unit that we talked about, and the parents behind me were surprised, they never heard about that, because their kids don't care. It's the parents who care. So if we're focusing on students, putting students first, we should listen to the students and still take into consideration the parents, but listen to the students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Adriana. Natalie Sonic.
Good evening, my name is Natalie Sonic. I have a daughter who's been attending Maple Grove High School, and I'm here tonight to request that our current policy 441, which protects minors from online pornography, be amended to include printed materials. Back in May, I met with Principal Becker of Maple Grove High School to express my concerns of sexually graphic books found in our school libraries. I was informed in this meeting that the district does not have a current policy in place for protecting minors from sexually graphic printed materials, and that any policy change request would need to be made through the school board itself. During the last two school board sessions, I have given you two clear examples of why there needs to be a change and why there needs to be a policy for this. The two books I read are just a couple examples of the many that I have found. These books should have never been allowed in our schools, they are not appropriate for minors, and we need a policy to protect our students. I have completed the procedure 652, which is the procedure to request a reevaluation of textbook and instructional material, including library books. This process is long and drawn out, and parents should not have to complete this process to ensure that the children are safe from sexually graphic books. I'm here tonight to request that our current policy 441 be amended to include printed material. Policy 441 is our internet policy in place to protect minors from online harmful content, which the policy describes as any content that is pornographic, obscene, or sexually explicit, and materials that use language or images that are inappropriate in the educational setting. If we need a policy to protect students from digital images that are inappropriate and harmful to our minors, then why don't we have a policy to protect our students from this same content but in printed form? Anxiety, depression, and depression in children are at its highest rates. Our children need to be allowed to be children. They deserve to have their innocence back. This is such a small window in their life, and it needs to be preserved. There is a time and a place for these books, but it is not now when our students are minors. The common themes in these books are sexual intercourse, oral sex, pornography, alcohol and drug use, child sexual abuse, suicide, masturbation, rape, and abortion. These are all very heavy topics for adults, let alone minors. I'm asking you tonight as school board members who all care about our students that we put politics aside and come together for the sake of our children. By coming together and amending our current policy 441 to include printed materials, we can work together to rebuild parent trust and allow our children this time of innocence. Thank you for all that you do. Together we have an opportunity to make a lasting impact for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Please remember that we are not clapping between speakers. I will ask people to leave if they continue to do that, we did that last month. Thank you so much for respecting that. Just as a matter of information, Ms. Sonic, the policy committee will be meeting in October? Yeah, I just wanted to let you know that if you're worried about it, they don't meet till October.
And it's open to the public.
And it is open to the public, and it's on the website when the policy committees are. So the people on that are here, they heard you, thank you. Brianna Tate, or Brianna?
Brianna Tate, I am the mom of two beautiful daughters in the school district. So just in reaction to last meeting, I mean, clarity, transparency, these are words that got mentioned quite a lot. This is what we intended to achieve. However, I feel like we received anything but clarity and transparency in response to our questions. Instead, we're given the same vague, "we don't know yet, still being worked on" responses. For instance, when will curriculum-related announcements be communicated to stakeholders? We don't know yet. Who will be giving these lessons? We're not sure. What will training for these topics look like? We don't know yet. Can students be asked or solicited for their pronouns? Still being worked on. All easy questions, yet we receive vague and elusive talking points. Truth is, many families are not comfortable with their children being asked what their pronouns are, yet the school has no policy or direction to give on this. Instead, it's been downplayed and equated to asking a child what their favorite ice cream flavor is, or what they did on summer vacation. And pardon me, but asking for preferred pronouns is a completely different matter than the simple get-to-know-you icebreakers. So please stop gaslighting us into thinking that we're overreacting. We're repeatedly told, "Don't worry, your kids are not being indoctrinated", but in reality, flying the Pride Progress flag is a political statement. The idea that everyone is welcome here is already established and has my complete agreement. But the practice of teaching children about the morality of particular sexual orientations and behaviors is, in fact, indoctrination. It was reiterated that the goal is to ensure everyone is valued and heard with no one being disrespected and no one experiencing harm. I agree, no one should be disrespected or harmed. My question is, what qualifies as harm? Not using someone's preferred pronouns? Having an issue with a student using a bathroom not matching their biological sex? What about the harm experienced by a female student being forced to change in the same locker room as a biological male who identifies as female? What about these students? Under this philosophy, I assume a student identifying as a teacher is allowed to use the faculty restrooms? Where and how do we make this distinction? One of the first distinctions small children can make is whether a someone is boy, girl, male, female. I'm confident most two-year-olds, including my own, can accurately make this distinction. Yet now, in essence, the proposal is that we teach kids there is not a standard of truth and that they can believe anything they want to believe, even if not scientifically accurate or medically correct. I believe in tolerance. At the same time, I also believe that it's not transphobic to believe in physical reality. In the last 10 years, there's been a 4,000% spike in gender dysphoria. Some would suggest this is due to society being more tolerant, but myself and others believe social contagion plays a strong role in this. Our youth is confused, and us affirming beliefs such as being born in the wrong body or being able to change sexes is not the one-size-fits-all answer to this. Think of a student suffering from anorexia. We would not affirm their distorted body image, yet that's what's being suggested. All kids struggle with identity and fitting in during their school years, always have, always will. Promoting the illusion that switching one's gender identity is the answer to their problems is a huge disservice to our kids. Instead of focusing on these divisive labels, I hope we can someday focus on who our kids are intrinsically and emphasize the content of their character. Thank you.
Thank you. John Gap.
Good evening, my name is John Gap. I am a resident and a father of a Maple Grove freshman. The last time I addressed this board, I read part of a letter from a teacher in the district. The reading of that letter recorded over 1.5 million views on social media and has been shared over 20,000 times. It clearly struck a chord with many, many people, including thousands of parents and families in this district as it recounted the heavy hand that this school district is using to push a particular ideology and where opposing opinions are not always tolerated. This time, I would like to share my own message to this board. I address you as a father with decades of experience as a coach of basketball and golf, as a former youth pastor, and as a former substitute teacher at a school in the Osseo School District. I also address you as a father who too late became aware of the direction and policies that this school board has taken over the past years. I'm glad now to be able to stand and have a voice. I hope you will hear me. I, like many like-minded parents in this district, have a love and compassion in my heart for each and every child in our community, no matter their background or social status. They are precious and they are worth the effort to support them in their educational aspiration as they dare to dream big and pursue the realization of their dreams. What I and many of the others I represent do not agree with is the push by the school board and some very vocal faculty and staff that we've heard from in past meetings, is to embrace the ideology that does not represent the whole of the constituency of this board and this district. It is said that it takes a village to raise a child, and in many ways that rings true. I experienced valuable insight and lessons from coaches and teachers growing up, but that was all in support of the authority that my parents, being the last word, was the last word. While I appreciate the opportunities in this community for my children, the care and upbringing of my children belongs solely to me and my family. It is up to us to instill in them the values that center and ground them and the virtues that guide them. I would like to be able to trust my children's teachers to be solely interested in teaching academics, to teach math, to teach science, language, art, to expect respect for every person in their space, but not to teach one brand of ideology or another behind my back. This district needs boundaries. It needs to remember that it exists solely to serve the educational needs of the families in it, and it will not be effective without the trust of the parents. I'm asking you, School Board, to remember who it is that you are working for and with. I'm asking you to represent me and the parents like me and all of our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Straight and Erica Foster are coming up together, I believe?
Hi, my name is Michelle Straight, and I'm a parent in the district. I'm here with Erica Foster to talk about the gender inclusion policy and the LGBTQ plus resolution. We agree that all students, teachers, and staff should be respected, and that all students should be seen, heard, and supported in school, and should have a sense of belonging and value. These are core values of our district. The focus of Osseo District Schools should be on shared humanity, which creates respect and equity for all people, and reinforces that no student should be harassed, discriminated against, bullied, or excluded based on their race, culture, sexual orientation, gender, or any other differences. All students should feel safe and be treated with kindness and inclusion. We believe these things are supported with the existing bullying policy 514, which negates the need for the gender inclusion policy 508 and the LGBTQ plus resolution. We ask that the school board and school administration listen to community stakeholders and reevaluate and repeal the gender inclusion policy and LGBT resolution due to the following four reasons. Number one, our schools should be a neutral space for students of all backgrounds to coexist and leave teaching of cultural, social, political, and religious values to families. Number two, improving academic opportunity and performance should be the focus of our schools. Number three, the policy and resolution exclude many students as they conflict with their cultures, religion, sex-based rights, and freedom of expression. Number four, we are a multicultural community, and as such, we should not be elevating one community over others.
My name is Erica Foster, mom to three kids in the school district. In June 2021, the gender inclusion policy 508 was passed by the school board. In June 2022, the LGBTQIA+ History and Culture Resolution was approved by the school board by a vote of four to two. The resolution is an egregious overstep of the school district into the private lives of families. Students belong to the individual family unit, not the school board or the school district. The school district has no responsibility to shape the sexuality or sexual morality or gender of my children. Moral education isn't the role of the school system, it is the role of the family to create values, morals, and a belief system for our children. School staff should not be discussing children's sexual preferences with them or vice versa. The resolution and policy 508 were rolled out poorly with little input and communication from the stakeholders of the district. In line with our previous statements to the board, we believe that the resolution and policy 508 should be repealed as they are an overstep of the school district into the personal lives of families. We have repeatedly contacted the district, school board, and learning leaders to raise our concerns and to request to be involved. We have been rebuffed. In fact, on at least two occasions, district staff has stated that they plan to implement the resolution regardless of parent disagreement or pushback. This spring, after numerous emails and meetings with district leadership, we decided to start a petition to request that the resolution and gender policy be repealed. To date, over 1,200 parents, voters, and staff, as well as students, have signed the petition, students that are 18-plus. Their voices should be heard. We ask that the school board repeal gender policy 508 and the LGBTQIA+ resolution. Thank you.
Jennifer Dodge.
Good evening, my name is Jennifer Dodge, and I am a parent of a Park Center student. Some statistics, I will email to the board after this. Forty-one percent of LGBTQ young people seriously considered attempting suicide this past year, and young people who are transgender, non-binary, and people of color reported higher rates than their peers. Fourteen percent of LGBTQ young people attempted suicide in the past year. Thirty-eight percent found their home to be non-LGBTQ-affirming. Roughly half of transgender, non-binary young people found their school to be gender-affirming, and those who did reported a lower rate of attempted suicide. Majority of LGBTQ young people reported being verbally harassed at school because people thought they were LGBTQ. And people who had access to affirming homes, schools, community events, and online spaces reported lower rates of attempting suicide compared to those who did not. Affirming gender identity among transgender, non-binary young people is consistently associated with lower rates of attempted suicide. So some of you have campaigned on the "Students First", empowering students, empowering each scholar's success story, or you expressed your commitment to equity for all students. You've talked the talk to get in these seats, now you need to walk the walk. We aren't here because LGBTQIA+ people exist. We're here because people can't be decent human beings. And you can even witness that previous meetings, people don't listen to Chair Moscata Jones's direction on how to behave at a meeting. So we need to create a safe environment for all students to learn. Based on this, what I previously provided, this can be viewed as a life or death situation. And I can stand in front of you and tell you what I think needs to be done, use my privilege and tell you that? Talk to the students. Talk to the LGBTQIA+ students. What do they need to succeed and even survive? In March of 2023, a settlement of $840,000 was reached with the Huntsville City Board of Education after a 15-year-old student named Nigel Shelby committed suicide after being bullied at school and on social media because he was gay. School staff violated Title VI and Title IX, which prohibits public schools from ignoring harassment based on gender stereotyping, which goes on in Osseo school districts today. So I applaud you for taking steps forward, and we need to keep moving it forward. And to any of the LGBTQIA+ young people who aren't in affirming homes, schools, or don't have a safe place, you're loved, reach out for help. You can access the trevorproject.org on all school devices now, so thanks for taking care of that as well. Thank you.
Ahmed Alwarakeh? I'm sorry. Was I even close?
Oh, no, you did. My name is Ahmed Alwarakeh, and I'm a parent of three childrens. I do not prepare anything just to speak, just because I'm Muslim over here. I'm raising all the kids. Let you know that I'm a Muslim and practicing my religion with my wife. My children, you know, they are practicing the religion too, you know, with us. We believe that everyone should have a fair and just and the nicest ever treatment, you know, no discrimination among, you know, the students. However, speaking so, if I'm teaching my children, as a Muslim, we have like a values to promote. These values, you know, to be nice to the neighbor, helpful, and, you know, keep your contact and, you know, your prayer and so on. At the same time, we have a boundaries we cannot, you know, cross. These boundaries like, you know, for example, which is okay for some, but not for us, you know, as a practicing like, you know, the Islam. For example, intercourse outside of the marriage is not allowed in Islam. For example, like tattoos, drinking alcohol, eating pork, and so on. Among that one is homosexuality is not allowed in Islam. So, if I'm teaching my children in home or at home, that is not allowed, and then, hey, go and celebrate, that is kind of like causing confusion to our children. And this confusion can cause, I can see it like it's either increasing the hate against LGBTQ, or get confusion that's maybe go to the mental issues and, you know, suicide or something like that. I don't want to, you know, I wanted to solve, you know, the issue of LGBTQ. Yes, that's correct, but not on the price of the other students who practicing, you know, their belief. Thank you so much.
Chris Erickson.
Evening. Chris Erickson. Full disclosure, I am a Brooklyn Park City Council member, but I am representing myself alone this evening as a parent of three Osseo School District children. Several weeks ago, a gentleman from this podium spoke against the gender inclusion policy and cited his role as an emergency medicine physician in doing so. That struck me as interesting, given that most medical academic societies are in agreement that gender-affirming treatment is the best medical and scientific approach. So, I would like to read from the American College of Emergency Physicians their policy statement on caring for transgender and gender diverse patients in the emergency department. The American College of Emergency Physicians is committed to equitable, culturally competent, and knowledgeable treatment of transgender and gender diverse patients receiving care in emergency departments. We believe that gender-affirming care is supported by evidence and by the medical community. Transgender and gender diverse patients should have access to comprehensive gender-affirming health care that is provided in a safe and inclusive clinical setting. Emergency physicians need to be knowledgeable and aware of the unique needs and best practices related to care of transgender and gender diverse patients at all ages in the emergency department. Emergency doctors should, or sorry, emergency departments should foster and develop practices, policies, and accessible resources that provide a supportive and inclusive environment for transgender and gender diverse patients, including removing structural barriers to care. Hospitals provide ongoing education, training, and resources to all physicians and staff related to best practices of these patients. And emergency physicians must be able to practice high-quality, objective, evidence-based emergency medical care without legislative or judicial interference in the physician-patient relationship. It strikes me that if you replace the word physician with staff or faculty, the word patient with student, this document very closely resembles what the community is asking for as it relates to the treatment of transgender and gender diverse students in our schools. Thank you.
Ron Sonic.
Good evening. My name is Ron Sonic. I'm a parent of a daughter in Maple Grove High School. I've been asked to read the following statement on behalf of a current District 279 secondary teacher. As I enter my 25th year of teaching in over 20 years as a secondary teacher in District 279, I am confused and disheartened. Sadly, as we returned yesterday for workshops, there are now voids in our staffing due to teachers walking away from their teaching career in District 279. At the same time, our administration was sharing about multiple staffing shortages in our building and the need to work on a Plan B, which only takes away learning opportunities from our students. In the last two weeks, I have now interacted with teachers in at least one of the following scenarios. Scenario one, if they were to redo their career choice, they would not have gone into education. Second scenario, they would not encourage their own children to enter the field of education. Scenario three, they were currently putting plans together to leave education within the next two years. And the fourth scenario, that the teachers are too far into their teaching career and that they are not able to transition into another career at this point despite their desire to leave. I believe it'd be very disconcerting if we were to survey district staff and see the number of them that would identify themselves as being in one of these four scenarios. The education world has been in a whirlwind the last several years, from that of technology changes, phones, mental health needs of students, lowering of standards, and societal changes. As a teacher, I have not compromised my personal convictions that have been established throughout my life journey. However, the district is pushing forth efforts now that could put me in a position to compromise on values that I hold true to me individually and to my personal faith and religion, or worse, force me to leave education. As we go forward, please make every effort to include all staff in consideration to changes. Transparency has been stated as a priority of this board for multiple years, but trust has not been established with staff and the District 279 community. There are many domino effects to each decision made. A perfect example is now unfolding, and whether we will have resource officers in our buildings after the state legislature implements procedures that will not provide the protection that officers need in order to do their job and keep our schools safe. As our district bond request is coming up for vote in November, you must have the district staff come alongside this effort. You'll need the endorsement from staff that District 279 is a place where we are proud to be staff members and that education is a career that we continue to be passionate about and not the reverse, as I have witnessed this week. Thank you for hearing my heart of concern, a District 279 secondary teacher. Thank you.
That was our last speaker for tonight. Our next agenda item is the superintendent's report. Dr. Hile.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Mosquita-Jones and school board members. We gather here this evening once again with one goal for our school board, staff, students, parent gardens, and community members. This goal is for Osseo Area Schools to create one community for all, where all voices are valued and heard. In recognizing this goal, I work toward holding space for all plays a critical part in our district core values, which are honor and integrity, belonging, inclusion, innovation and excellence, intrinsic value, and yes, transparency. Our road is of continuous improvement in ensuring our scholars receive an outstanding educational experience and program. Our commitment is to and will always be to our scholars. We acknowledge the honor of teaching our stakeholders' children each day, and we will continually work towards educating and addressing the needs of each and every one of our students each day. Now, a regular part of our superintendent's report is to share points of pride in our district. By sharing our points of pride, we are taking the time to recognize and celebrate the scholars, staff, and community members who are contributing to accomplishments of our mission statement, which reads, "To inspire and prepare each and every scholar with confidence, courage, and competence to achieve their dreams, contribute to community, and engage in a lifetime of learning." I have members of our district cabinet here to assist in sharing some of these examples with you from the last few weeks. Brian Severson Hall, Executive Director, Community Education, will kick us off. Brian?
Our first area is achieving dreams. Twelve Park Center Senior High School scholars kept working hard and pushing it forward this summer to earn their high school diplomas. Congratulations to the graduates. Dr. Emily Torres, who graduated from Maple Grove Senior High School in 2011, has always led her passion for volunteering and community service drive her in her educational journey and her career. Dr. Torres said, "For me personally, the goal of life is the pursuit of happiness. You just got to try things and figure out what you like and don't like." Learn more about Dr. Torres in our graduate spotlight on our website.
In the area of contributing to community, Superintendent Dr. Kim Hile made the rounds at national night out events around the district the evening of Tuesday, August 1st, visiting community festivities in both Maple Grove and Brooklyn Park. We had a blast sponsoring the Maple Grove Parks and Recreation Kids Concert. Kids Dance had all the kids busting out their best dance moves. A huge thank you to everyone who joined us and visited our booth.
In the area of lifelong learning, last week, incoming ninth-grade students at Park Center Senior High School, Osseo Senior High School, and Maple Grove Senior High School attended orientation. Led by 11th and 12th graders in Link Crew, the students participated in a variety of activities to get them ready for high school. Scholars recently participated in a middle school marching band camp at Osseo Senior High School. The middle school musicians spent three days learning marching drills and new songs, and then took their new skills to perform with the Osseo Senior High marching band.
Over 65 staff members from Edinburgh Elementary, Brooklyn Middle School, Osseo Middle School, Maple Grove Middle School, Northview Middle School, Maple Grove Senior High, and Osseo Senior High actively participated in the Avid Summer Institute. Three days of professional development, collaboration, and goal-setting have invigorated our leaders as they prepare for the upcoming school year. The energy was contagious as they strategized and exchanged ideas. Together, we are preparing to equip our students with the skills and confidence they need to thrive and excel in their academic journey. Maple Grove Senior High School senior Jewel Figueroa is one of dozens of high school students that took part in a Hennepin County Medical Center's six-week talent garden internship program, which was recently featured by CCX Media. The program allows students to shadow multiple departments within a sprawling hospital and clinics around the metro for a chance to get a hands-on, up-close experience in the medical field. Figueroa said, "I don't want to be behind a desk. I don't want to just have a desk or do nothing. Be boring for my life. I want to help people." In the area of mission-driven employees, last week, over 200 new Osseo Area Schools teachers participated in a new teacher workshop. The new teachers met other new teachers from their building, heard from district leaders, attended trainings, and learned about resources, mentorships, and support systems the district offers its staff. With just a few days left until the 2023-24 school year begins, these new teachers are ready and excited to serve scholars across the district.
In the latest staff spotlight, we highlighted Gerald Edwards, who has served as the Technology Coordinator in Osseo Area Schools for six years. Edwards spends most of his time working to maintain and improve the district's student information system, which maintains all student and family data, records, grades, attendance, and more. The department also works on security and ensuring that staff, students, and families have access to the software they need, such as Schoology, CSO, and others. Edwards' competitive spirit often leads him to stay late, making sure he and his team are doing things the best they can to manage all their tasks. Edwards said, "Every day, I think, what can we do better than we did yesterday? I like the teamwork, the collaborative approaches that every department takes in trying to find solutions for students in our district." During the school year, our Nutrition Services Team works diligently every day to provide healthy and delicious meals. Even during summer break, Nutrition Services continued their work of keeping scholars fed in various ways throughout the community. Throughout the summer, Osseo Area Schools provided free meals to children 18 years of age or younger through the federally funded Summer Food Service Program. The meals were provided at both district school sites and parks across the community. The Nutrition Services Team additionally partnered with the cities of Brooklyn Park and Brooklyn Center to act as the school food authority for the rec-on-the-go programs, providing meals to participants of their summer programming. Scholars participating in Summer Kid Stop at sites across the district were provided breakfast and lunch each day as well, fueling them for their days of playing outside and participating in educational activities and opportunities. Thank you to our dedicated Nutrition Services Team for serving our scholars. As another great summer of Kid Stop comes to a close, we would like to take the opportunity to thank all of the dedicated Kid Stop workers for all of their hard work this summer and all that they do for our scholars.
Thank you, team. I have one more additional highlight to share. Last week, we learned that our district was ranked the fifth-best employer in the state of Minnesota on the Forbes American Best Employers by State 2023 list. The district is the only education institution listed in the top 10 and the only K-12 program ranked in the top 50. Other top Minnesota employers included Costco, the Mayo Clinic, and General Mills. Way to go, Osseo Area Schools. A few additional reminders, even though I'm sure you don't need it, we're excited to welcome back staff and scholars. The first day of school is Tuesday, September 5th. It's just a few days away. We're all ready here and be ready for the school buses on the street, and make sure you stop when you see that red sign pop out. Please make sure to fill out Educational Benefits and Back to School forms, please, prior to the start of the school year. More information can be found at district279.org/backtoschool. Our community is considering school building needs on November 7th ballot question called Building a Better Future Phase II. The final phase of Building a Better Future meets the overall needs of our schools for the foreseeable future, equipping our students with what they need to succeed not only today, but many, many years to come in the future. So, get informed and get out to vote. Early voting starts September 22nd. We also are quite proud to have a Joint Powers Agreement, or JPA, between District 279 and the city of Brooklyn Park. It's included under the consent agenda this evening. Details of the JPA have been published on the district website. We are very appreciative that the city of Brooklyn Park has agreed to assist our school district with much of the heavy lifting that is involved in a special election. We're looking forward to collaborating with them. We also, for our athletic ones out there, registration is now open for District 279. 13th Annual Reading is fun 5K. You can run or you can walk. Hosted at Elm Creek Park Reserve on Saturday, October 7th, this family-friendly event will raise funds for media centers in Osseo Area Schools to purchase learning resources. And thank you, and that includes tonight's superintendent report.
Thank you, Dr. Hile, and thank you, team. Our next agenda item is school board reports. Director Brooks, do you have a report or an update?
I have no reports, but looking forward to it. Committee's starting to make up.
Director Sonnen.
Yes, the Brooklyn Bridge Alliance for Youth Board met, and we meet quarterly. There was a number of really exciting updates on progress of strategic initiatives. One that I, you all get, I believe, the newsletter and you get information, and it's, and we do hear from B Bay each year as well. So, what you might notice in there was a lot of great work over the summer. One of them particularly focused on the reimagined Black Youth Mental Health. And what was really exciting about that update was really focusing on the positive contributions to mental health and really thinking about that asset-based mindset and how, when we're talking about the issue of mental health, we're talking not just about, we're not employing a deficit mindset toward what is impacting mental health negatively, but we have to think about the contributing factors. And even during COVID, shortly after, when we had a B Bay update, we talked about that, how important it was to have connections, to be part of activities, to be connected to one another as part of that positive aspect of mental health. So, do look into that packet and look into that information specifically on that because it has so much application to what we're doing. We also approved a grant that is going to go toward Osseo Schools and our partnership with B Bay in doing some analysis on our identity harm protocol and the effectiveness and the outcomes that that protocol has. So, it was a really great update. Do check that out.
Thank you. Director Mitchell?
Mine is the same as Director Brooks. A slight pause in August, but getting ready to ramp up this fall, so.
Director Grady?
No, no report tonight.
Okay, I do have one report. District 287 met last Thursday. We are including a new district in our, in our unit. Minnetoka asked to be, to join North, the District 287, I almost said Northwest Suburban because I'm on that one too. And then we approved a strategic plan that'll start on January, in January. And then we also met about policies and an equity tool to determine who needs to be on which committee for which policies. So, looking at the policies and thinking, who is affected by this policy and gathering voices from the people that are affected with that policy, including scholars, and then, and then. And then, and then after it's developed, using another equity tool to, to make sure that it fits with our population. So, that was the 287 report. The next agenda item is the Consent Agenda. Board members, is there anything you would like to remove from the Consent Agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as printed?
So moved.
Moved by Thomas Brooks. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Sarah Mitchell. Any discussion? Again, this is all financial and acceptance of grants and agreements and that joint powers agreement that Dr. Hile talked about. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion passes five to zero. Okay, here we go to the action items. I am very pleased to say that our first, our first action item is the recommendation for approval for the agreement on the terms and conditions of employment between ISD 279 School Board and Educational Support Professionals. Information will be shared by Laurel Anderson, Executive Director of Human Resources. Laurel?
Good evening, Chair Mosquita-Jones. School board members, this is Superintendent Hile. I will be addressing all three contracts for your consideration this evening in one address. On the agenda this evening for school board action, our recommendations for approval for three employee group contracts: Educational Support Professionals, Kid Stop Instructors, and Registered Nurse and Licensed Practical Nurses. The contracts you'll be considering this evening include approximately 750 employees who serve in essential frontline support positions throughout this district. Each of these agreements expired on June 30th, 2022, and the new agreements contain language changes that reflect current district practices as well as additional provisions that serve to support our district mission and strategic priorities, particularly the recruitment and retention of employees. School board members have had the opportunity to review proposed changes to the provisions contained in the terms and conditions, to ask questions, and to consider financial implications. Summaries of the specific changes to each contract are included in tonight's board packet. The new contract provisions fall within the financial parameters set by the school board for the 2022-2024 contract term. It is the superintendent's and my recommendation that you approve the employee contracts presented to you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, and we will be voting on these contracts separately. So, the first is the contract with ESPs. Is there a motion to approve the agreement on the terms and conditions of employment between the Independent School District 279 School Board and Educational Support Professionals, July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2024?
So moved.
Moved by Tamara Grady. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tanya Simons. Is there any discussion? I just want to say thank you to all our ESPs for working hard to come to agreement and along with our, with Laurel Anderson and Lisa Chang for having a collaborative process to make sure that we recognize how important our educational service professionals are. They're the glue that holds classrooms together. I get a little emotional because I'm a teacher and my ESP is family. So, I just wanted to say that. Any other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The motion passes five to zero. We have a contract. Thank you, everyone. The next item is the recommendation for the approval of the agreement on the terms and conditions of employment between ISD 279 School Board and Kid Stop Instructors. Is there a motion to approve this agreement? Okay, moved by Tamara Grady. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Thomas Brooks. Any discussion? Again, Kid Stop Instructors are such an important key to our district. It's the reason families can have care that they can trust so that they can do their positions and their jobs, and they're the ones that get to hear all the after-school stuff that bothered kids throughout the day. They're the ones to make sure that kids have that connection with each other outside of the school day. So, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion passes five to zero. The final contract approval is the recommendation for approval for the agreement on the terms and conditions of employment between ISD 279 School Board and Registered Nurses and Licensed Practical Nurses. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Sarah Mitchell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tamara Grady. Is there any discussion? Well, we all know how important nurses are, right? We, I appreciate that we've come to an agreement on this. We have, there's a shortage of nurses overall, and we appreciate our nurses and the fact that they could probably be making a whole lot of money somewhere else, so we appreciate that. Is there, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion passes five to zero. The final action item is the gifts to the district. Is there a motion to approve the gifts to the district totaling $15,317.46?
So moved.
Moved by Tanya Simons. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Thomas Brooks. Any discussion besides thank you so much for all those gifts? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion passes five to zero. Our final agenda item is adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting at 6:51?
So moved.
All right, Tamara Grady, move. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tanya Simons. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion passes five to zero, and this meeting is adjourned at 6:51.